We'll go ahead and call the meeting in order. This is the March 4th Planning Commission meeting. First item on the agenda is approval of the December 4th minutes. Has everyone had a chance to look at those? Is there a motion to accept?
I'm going to accept.
A second.
Okay, have a motion and a second. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, say no. Motion carries. Second item, consider a variance for a 16-foot garage sidewall at 3124 South Kansas. Suzanne, you want to go ahead?
Yes, Commissioners. The purpose of this item is to construct an accessory structure with 16-foot sidewalls. The applicant, Douglas Groch, has submitted the application. And the request is, as written in your packet, a variance from Section 3.2 General Use Regulation, Bulk Regulations Applicable to Accessory Structures and Uses. The maximum sidewall height for all accessory structures shall not exceed 12 feet and shall contain no more than a single ground-level story, the attic of which shall be designed to carry loads for storage only. All of the requirements for legal publication have been met. And the following are, as you know, the staff and applicant questions and then comments that are based on the standards for granting variances. So we'll go through these quickly. The first is, A, explain how the variance request arises from such condition which is unique to the property in question and which is not ordinarily found in the same zone or district and is not created by an action or actions of the property owner or the applicant. The applicant's comment is, "The one-acre lot is irregular-shaped, not part of any development. The garage is being built to minimize vertical height intrusion. The garage is being located on a lot to allow room for a future home." Item B, explain how the granting of the variance will not adversely affect the rights of adjacent property owners or residents. Applicant's comment, "Variants will have no effect on the right of any adjacent residence. Variants will minimize visual effect of garage. Garage will be approximately same height as adjacent homes." Item C, explain how strict application of the provisions of the zoning regulations of which variance is requested will constitute unnecessary hardship upon the property owner represented in the application. The applicant's commentary, "Trying to minimize overall height of garage to have less visual impact. All setbacks will be followed." Item D, explain how the variance desired will not adversely affect the public health, safety, morals, order, convenience, prosperity, or general welfare. Applicant's comment, "Overall height of garage will be significantly less than allowed by current zoning regulations." Item E, explain how the variance desired will not be opposed to the general spirit and intent of the zoning regulations. Applicant's comment, "Buildings will have 16-foot sidewalls, a 312 pitch roof, which will make total height significantly less than allowed by zoning regulations." We have a few pictures, I believe, on the screen that shows you the layout and the distance from the back. Or it would be the east is to the back, to the rear, which is on the right of the picture. And the blue in the picture there shows where the applicant is wanting to place the structure, which would be 15 or 25 feet off of the back lot line, which would be required. And the applicant's property, his home is to the south of that location. There's two separate lots here. And the zoning code does allow for this, for the adjacent property to build an accessory structure. That is a change that we did recently in the new zoning code. And the other thing that I would comment on, so that it's clear, and then we do have the applicant here, if you would like to hear from him or if he has some additional comments, is the maximum height that would be allowed for a building like this would be 30 feet. But what he is requesting, because he has adjusted the pitch of the roof and with the 16-foot sidewalls, the building would end up being four inches over 22 feet, so 22 feet, four inches tall.
I think the code is actually 35 feet is allowed, isn't it?
No, it's 30.
30?
Yes.
Maybe I'll look inside.
Yeah, and Mr. Groch, if you would like to speak to the Commissioner, I guess that you come up to the podium, please.
We'll want to talk to you anyway. I did have one question. What's the height of the existing shed you have there?
It's 12-foot sidewalls.
12-foot sidewalls.
Yeah.
I didn't go measure it. I drive by all the time.
There should, there's pictures in the packet, maybe on the screen, too, that show the existing structure.
I looked at raising the existing, and by the time I did the cost of raising the existing, it was pushing the cost of a new building, so. It's actually 12-foot six sidewalls, so it's more than, but it was there before the city was.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Groch?
Did you intentionally lower the slope of the roof just to help to build the?
No, actually, the original quote I got on it had a 212 pitch, or 12, 2, whichever you say it. And I don't think that's enough pitch for snow and everything, so I actually moved it to a 312, which is going to be approximately the same height as the houses to the east, give or take a little bit. I can't tell you exactly, but standing there estimating what their floor and a half that sticks out of the ground is, plus the pitch of their roofs, I think I'm going to be, like I say, approximately the same height as them. You can see the house right in the center of the picture.
The ground does look lower there, too.
It slopes, it slopes that way, yes. Now, like, that house behind her has a view-out basement, so it's, and that's a six-foot fence.
So have you always been in the city or were you annexed in?
I was annexed.
How long ago was that?
Maybe 20 years ago. I think he wanted sewer, and so we annexed for utilities.
It was to get the utilities.
Oh, when the water and sewer lines were put in?
Yeah.
It was well after the water and sewer was put to the outlet.
To the outlet, yeah.
Yeah, I'd say about 20 years.
Actually, it was shortly after the development started, because the sewer was there.
Yeah. Any other questions? Thank you. We'll go ahead and open, unless there's any comments, we'll go ahead and open a public hearing. Anyone from the public want to, come on up, state your name and address, please?
My name's Jim White. I live at 605 Autumn Ridge, which is probably 30 to 40 yards from Tricia and Doug's property. And...
Is it the brown house there?
No.
To the north, or?
There's another, there's another picture back. I would be, try one more picture.
Hey, why don't you show, sir?
I'll show you.
Yeah, if you don't mind.
Right. Now I'm kind of lost.
Right there.
Here?
That's Bernard's. Get right below it.
Oh, right here.
There you go.
Okay. You have all the geese laying in your backyard, right?
We have lots of geese back there. So I kind of, I thought about this, and I have a little statement, but I believe it's crucial to uphold the current regulation to maintain fairness and consistency within Newton City limits. And this is the first time I've ever been here, but I've watched it online a few times, and it's very interesting. I should come more, probably will when I'm retired. But I think, I think it's important to maintain what we have. We're in the city, and our Newton City Council should do this to, I mean, leave it as is to be, have a predictable framework for residents when developing structures in our neighborhoods. It isn't a neighborhood, in my opinion. Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Anyone else want to speak? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Thank you. Commissioner, any thoughts?
I would make one comment to you, that we have had four requests for changes to the sidewalls to be increased above the code in the last five years that have been approved.
Okay.
So it's not a lot. They don't come a lot, but...
Yeah, thank you for that.
The other thing I would state is, is shown on your, in the memo in the packet, but remember that this variance cannot be granted if even one of those above conditions is not met. And the variances are not for correcting mistakes that cause a property to come into compliance with a particular code requirement. Variances are not for situations where complying with a particular code requirement is inconvenient or more expensive.
I have a question for you guys that are in the trades, because I'm not. What, what are the structural advantages of having higher stem walls like this versus larger ones?
Larger garage doors to store larger implements, trucks, boats, RVs, probably RVs, my guess.
Yeah. I saw some big RV out there one day. I figured that's, yeah.
So just, just more height?
Just more height, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd throw in a couple of my comments to the commission. You know, this is, it is backed up by residential. I drive this way every day. I live out here, too. I don't really, I've never considered those lots along South Kansas to be resident, they're big lots, so there's room out there. Minimizing the height, the total height of it, I think, is kind of the intent, to not have a skyscraper here or anything. So that's kind of where I come from. I mean, I just feel with the size of the lot, the, the location from the housing, that this is not a backyard. This is a structure on a one-acre lot, that it's four feet more, it's in further in private property that used to be in the county, that's now in the city. I don't see any problem with view sites from neighboring houses, even though it's, you know, still quite a distance. I don't see any reasons why. This should be not granted. Do you want to make a motion to that?
I'll make a motion that we approve the...
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is the annual review of the comprehensive plan. Devin, I guess you're handling this?
So this, this is by statute that we're supposed to review this plan every single year. And so this is for the 2024 yearly review. The statute that allows kind of the regulation of the comprehensive plan is KSA 12747 and specifically the D section. It's pretty broad. It allows us to make any amendments, extensions, or additions that we deem appropriate. And so I think what I'd like to propose to everyone tonight is that, you know, we leave this on the agenda for at least one more meeting, and that way everybody can, I mean, it's a hundred-plus-page document.
I was hoping you'd read it.
Yeah. We can in-depth go over the whole thing tonight. But, so I was thinking, I don't know if, it makes sense to me, maybe, if everybody came up with one proposed new idea or at least one comment on the plan of either something you like or something you dislike. But it's really just a broad look at if we want to change anything, this is kind of our time to do it. And then if we, if you ever decide that you do want to change something or add something to the plan, we just make a recommendation to the city commission, so they get the final say on it.
Are there any timeframes on updating comp plans? Are there any set things, or it's just, I think it needs updated?
Not that I'm aware of.
I don't think so.
This plan is in effect from 2010 to 2030.
2030, yeah.
So how, how does this plan fit into, like, an overall planning and zoning plan, like a, our booklet? How, how does this fit into that?
I mean, that's a good question. I mean, the comprehensive plan is just right there in the name. I mean, it's trying to set out the goals and the planning for the entire city. It, it's just something that ideally we want to have and for the growth to be there in the future, just, just setting out your broad goals. And so then how it relates to kind of the zoning or regulations that we have, I mean, I don't know if there is any direct correlation between those things.
So, so if I'm a developer and I'm looking at Newton, the first thing that I'm going to get from the city would be this comprehensive plan? Or have I already read that and decided I'm coming, and then, like, like, who besides us is going to read this?
Developers could. Definitely, it's something that we would utilize. It's kind of a broad brush strokes that helps staff, the city commission approves it, helps staff know what direction we're headed as a community. If, we use it a lot, if we're, say, applying for grants or something, we, we show, hey, this is in our comprehensive plan, because we want everybody kind of agreeing overall, this is the direction that we're headed. And it's posted on the website for developers to read in advance if they want to. If they come here and they're wanting to build, we definitely would refer them to that. It's with all the other documents.
So it's 100 pages long. Sounds, seems like an awful lot of pages to say that.
Yeah.
Yeah, it covers a lot of stuff, though.
Yeah.
It covers a lot of areas. And it had some surveys and some things that were done.
Yeah.
Kind of interesting, and, you know, I just was flipping through it, and it talked about how the plan, they took, took a poll about whether you wanted a library or not wanted a library. Well, now we have a library.
Yeah.
So there are some things that have come to fruition over time that maybe need to be addressed.
Yeah, I just wondered if, going through this, I glanced at it, I didn't read every word, but going through it, I was wondering, I saw a lot of things that were done, but I wasn't sure about the things undone, you know, like what the status of, you know, the third of it or fourth of it that hadn't been done yet, so just not knowing everything happening in Newton. So I didn't know if anybody looked at that, and...
That's kind of what I'm asking.
Yeah, I know you have your CIP and everything.
I do know one of the goals of this plan was to kind of combine with Newton, with North Newton, and so it's kind of setting out a framework for any type of future agreements between those two cities. And so, I mean, something we could potentially add into this is if we wanted any future agreements with the county, adding any kind of plan with Harvey County and the city of Newton.
If, if I may.
Yes, please.
They put their company...
You want to state your name?
Oh, my, my name is Daniela Rivas. I'm the new city manager. And this is very high level, but I'd like to express my opinion about our plan. Our plan is very comprehensive. It's a large document. It's not easily read through. It, it's not easy to read. I would really like to update this in a big way. I have a great team, and that's going to take some time. Perhaps perusing it this time, looking at high-level items, making some suggestion, suggestions to get us through this year might be good, a good way to spearhead us into getting this updated, because it does need, I want to say, a refresh. It really needs to align with our policies and our, and our goals, our strategic goals, which, as you mentioned, have, a big portion of them have already happened, so we need to clean it up. Even though it is a 20-year plan, and it's 2024, by 2025, I mean, we, we could do a refresh and start working on that 2030 to 2050 plan. So I hate, I hate to say this, but I think perhaps in the next three to four weeks, maybe you peruse it, and we hold off for the next coming year, dur, during the next year, not wait a year. In this coming year, we will start working on, on getting it refreshed, because it does need a little help.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Well, I guess that was kind of, kind of my point, is when you read through it, I mean, what is there for us to do?
Sure.
This, I mean, it seems like a rubber stamp when it gets to the point that it's here. There's not much, we, we're not going to do the survey. We're not going to, we're not going to look at the results of the survey. We're not...
I think your role now is probably more important than when we were doing it the first time, because we did so many public meetings and all of those, taking a lot of input from people. But this time, you get to look through it with the eyes of history, knowing what we've been doing in the community and being, and you can know what has happened and how development has maybe changed and what things have come before you since this was put into place, so that you might have some really good comments towards, hey, we might want to adjust this, or maybe we want to look at this. Because times have changed, things have changed since we put this in place the first time. Yeah, this could be your opportunity to really start digging into the things that you do want to see changed, knowing that it's not all due in three weeks. Yeah. Your input is not all due in three weeks. But this will be spearheaded by, I believe, city staff with your input.
So how old is the survey that's in the back of it?
Oh, that's from 2010, '09? Yeah.
So not relevant at all at this point?
Yeah.
Yeah, I remember that, but it's been quite a while.
Yeah.
I've just seen some of the names on it.
It's, it's almost time to just start working on a new one.
Let's do that.
All right, all right, that sounds great.
Let's do that. Let's start there.
And I would just want to bring you back to the city manager's comments, your feedback. You can also think about what type of a document you want to see. Documents have changed a lot since this one was written. We don't necessarily see these multi-hundred-page documents as much, because you're right, nobody wants to slog through all that. So when you're looking at it through your eyes and your own professions, and if you want to give that feedback about what would make this attractive, how can we present the information in a way that is user-friendly? I think that's something that city staff would be very open to hearing about and wanting to incorporate.
Yeah, one of the general comments I'd have is, seeing these in the past, they were very watered down. This actually had a lot of detail in it, but kind of getting to the point of, you know, tracking it, you know, so it just doesn't go on the shelf, and, you know, because that's what happens with a lot of these. What you said is exactly right, that I think they're more concise now, they're more to the point. I think there's different types of comp plans going on right now, so I think that makes good sense. So everyone has homework to do. Guess we'll do that before the next meeting.
Just cancel out all the railroad stuff. It's never going to happen.
That's number one on my list.
It's never going to happen. Build the overhead. We don't, we don't control the US train system. Not going to happen.
Okay, we'll move on to the next item, presentation on coma. Is that you, Suzanne?
No, that's Devin.
Oh, Devin's just...
We're getting it pulled up. It'll be just one moment, I'm sorry.
People that wanted, if they don't want to stay for the coma.
Oh, yes, Historic Preservation. Yes, yes, yes. So there's more.
Doug, you don't want to stay and learn about coma?
No.
Because I, I was trying to put this at the end of the meeting if people didn't want to.
I was wondering if we could just go to the other meeting and then come back.
Yeah, that'd be fine with me, if you want to. Either way.
I'm not sure. You can't, you can't close this.
We would have to modify the agenda.
We can just do what we want. It's ready.
We can delay it.
It's ready.
We're not closing the meeting.
Yeah. It's, it's generally good practice that if it's on the agenda, that it should stay in that order, just FYI.
Rebels.
Well, let's go.
Do what we want.
Everybody buckle up. This is a very riveting PowerPoint presentation. Hopefully, everyone's familiar with what coma stands for. It's the Kansas Open Meetings Act. Here's the overview. We're going to talk a little bit about the underlying policy of coma, the entities covered by it, the statutory definition of the term, the meeting, what serial meetings are, any exceptions to coma, and then penalties, and we have some fun scenarios for everyone at the end, and then we'll open up for Q and A. So underlying policy, coma was originally enacted in 1972. The rules can be found at KSA 754317 through 4320. No binding action by public bodies or agencies shall be taken by a secret ballot. So that's kind of the main policy of this, is that everything is open and transparent to the public. The public has a right to know what's going on at these meetings when they involve the use of tax dollars. So, yeah, they must be open, and advance notice provided to those who request the The meaning of open, let's see. So that's one of the statutory definitions, is that all the meetings must be open. It means that the public must be allowed to listen to the discussion, and that binding action must be taken openly, so out in the public, not behind closed doors. Yeah, and it needs to be, any binding votes need to be made in open session. There's a Kansas Court of Appeals case that kind of hits on this, Stevens versus Hutchinson. In that case, the court ruled in favor of the county, even though they had improperly discussed county business during a recess. It was shown the discussion was not pre-arranged, no actual binding action was taken, and the recess was not used as subterfuge to thwart the policy of the act. So the courts have kind of said that, you know, mere technical violations made by the public body, you know, if they're made in good faith and, you know, you're making an effort to comply, and as long as you're in substantial compliance with coma, then the, you know, you haven't violated that open, that meaning of the open term. Another way that a meeting can be closed is if a meeting is in such an inconvenient location or a room so small that it makes it inaccessible for public attendance. And that could be another way that you have a closed meeting in violation of coma. So we're going through kind of the entities that are covered here. You know, what is a public group, body, or agency? There are groups that receive or expend public funds, and so it's kind of where do your tax dollars go? You know, those entities are also supported in whole or in part by those public funds. And, you know, coma does not apply to single people. It only applies to those public bodies and entities. So some of those examples are state and local public agencies, mainly anything related to the government. It does not apply to private entities, like a private company. So that's continued, the covered entities. Like I was just saying, it cover, it applies to governing bodies of all cities, counties, townships, and even school districts in Kansas. It even applies to the subordinate groups for those entities. Coma does not apply to city staff meetings or independent private groups formed outside of the covered entity. And so the city has taken the position that it does apply to the Planning Commission, the Community Development Commission, Development Commission, the Historic Preservation Commission. And so in order to have an official meeting that's defined under the statute, you have a, you have to have a couple different elements. It applies to any gathering or assembly, and that can be one in person, or it can be by the use of a telephone, or it can be by, this is the broad one that gets everybody, any other medium for interactive communication. And that applies, that can apply to any social media apps, any online technology. So you have to have that first, a meeting or gathering of people. Then it has to be conducted by a quorum of the membership of the public body and a quorum of the public body. Then it has to be conducted by a quorum of the membership of the public body, and a quorum is just a majority of the group. And then the purpose, you have to have the purpose of discussing the business or affairs of that public group. So this is just talking about ano- another way to define meeting. It's, it's really just a factual determination. The title of the gathering is irrelevant, so it doesn't matter what it's called. If it's called a retreat, or a work session, or executive session, or special meeting. It's just a case-by-case basis that they look at what actually happened. So yeah, closer look of these, these main elements for having a required meeting under coma. You have to have all three of these elements that I just talked about to trigger those rules and establish the necessity for an open meeting. So you have to have one, an interactive discussion. Discussion alone triggers the coma. It is not necessary that action or votes be taken. And it has to be by and between at least a majority of the body. So tonight we have six members. We'd need at least four to partake in the discussion. And then it has to be on matters relating to the functions of that body. So you have to be talking about the city of Newton and its business and affairs. And like I mentioned earlier, the, that broad third prong of the, the meeting is that it can be done over any interactive communication. And so that can include Facebook, comments on YouTube, posting on Twitter, just really any social media or new technology, even if you're having a Zoom call, if, if there were four members of the board and they were talking about city business, it would count. So it's very broad nowadays. And like we were talking about, the majority of the group. You know, a lot of boards, I mean, if your board was only a three-member board, then if you have two people just having a discussion, then you've hit that majority quota. But it just depends on the number of members that you have. You have to have more than half. So then that third prong of the meeting was, we were talking about, has pertain to the business or affairs of the commission. So you focus on the content of the communication. Notice of the time, the date, time, and place of any regular or special meeting has to be given to anyone that requests that notice. So if no one's requesting the notice, then it doesn't need to be given. Prior to any meeting, any agenda related to the business at the meeting must be made available to anyone requesting the agenda. The use of cameras, photographic lights, and recording devices shall not be prohibited at any meeting, but you have to be able to use it within reasonable order, orderly conduct of the proceedings. So there have been some legislative changes from AG, past AG opinions. Chance meetings, there, it's no longer a requirement that meetings be pre-arranged to fall under coma, so chance meetings do qualify. Or even having a Colorado mountain retreat. You know, they said that the city commission could not conduct a meeting at a retreat in the Colorado mountains as it would be unreasonably inaccessible to city residents. So I don't think we'll have that problem here. Any league meetings? The AG said that city governing body members, they could attend the League of Kansas municipality meetings, but they can't talk about specific business affairs of their city. And then there's no serial meetings. Do not be confused with breakfast cereal. This type is only, the word serial means a series of communications. It's a new rule that, you know, in two thousand eight they amended it, that disallow serial meetings. And even, I think a good example of serial meetings could almost be just like a Facebook open forum and having posts on there, back-and-forth posts with other committee members, but that's not allowed. And here, here's the rest of the elements of a serial meeting. So you need all six of these to have one, and these are not allowed, but. So it's a series of interactive communication. Again, it has to involve a majority of members. They have to share a common topic. And again, it has to concern the business affairs of the public body, and it has to be intended by any or all to, that they're trying to reach an agreement on a matter. And it has to be on a matter that requires binding action. So that would probably be the one that you would not be violated over Facebook posts. Now we're gonna go through a list of exceptions to coma, any quasi-judicial functions. So if you're trying, quasi-judicial is this, is if they're trying to make like a court-like judgment, like any zoning decisions or any type of appeal. So it's a administrative body that's kind of acting like a court and making a ruling, and so those are okay without coma requirements. Executive sessions, the city commission may recess into a closed executive meeting. Permissible justifications for these are limited, those in the statute. No binding action can be taken in those executive sessions, but you can reach a consensus. So an executive session for matters involving non-elected personnel, you can discuss matters of non-elected personnel. The purpose of the personnel matters. Its exemption is to protect privacy rights of employees, save personal reputations, and encourage qualified people to seek government employ. Another executive session rule is the attorney-client privilege. You know, if you need to have, when you're in an executive session, if you need to call for an attorney and talk about legal counsel, you can do that without having to worry about violating coma.
Nice picture, Devin.
That's Joe Pesci for everyone. So more executive session rules, data or trade secrets. You can discuss data relating to financial affairs or trade secrets. So kind of private information that needs to remain confidential is okay to talk about. Any acquisitions of real estate is okay. It's an exception that you may talk about during an executive session. It does not apply to the sale of property. So there's a few of these. There's a lot of exceptions during executive sessions. Another one is security measures. If you want those to remind, remain private, those don't need to be out in public. And so this, these are the penalties section. So, you know, if you violate coma, you can have civil penalties. It's never gonna be criminal. It does go up to five hundred dollar fine per violation. During my research, most of the ones I saw, they typically only fine you about fifty dollars. They can, a court can void any illegal actions that were taken during a meeting. And then this next one's a big one. They, I think every violation I've ever seen, they require mandatory training and education. And so something very similar to this would be a punishment. Another, if you violated coma, it could be grounds for a recall of office. The way coma can be enforced, it can be enforced by the Attorney General of the state, by any county attorney or district attorney, or just private citizen complaints. Any private citizen can file a complaint with the AG's office. And, you know, any complaint that gets filed, the, the AG's office looks into, and they find out if there's merit, and they do a full investigation and follow-up. Yeah, it says you need to file that action. You can actually file it in district court, in the county, wherever the action occurs. And so any private citizen can file that without even hiring an attorney, so. All right, we've made it to the fun scenarios. Scenario number one, Commissioner A makes posts on the county concerned citizens' Facebook page that the commission made appointments to the county hospital board during his planned absence. In response, Commissioner B makes posts explaining votes and responds to comments from other members of the group. Then they both engage in an online discussion about the past meeting and board appointments. So does every, anybody think this is a coma violation, or does it requ, hit all the requirements? Let's see. I gotta say, Mark Zuckerberg says it is a coma violation. It, it did involve a quorum in this situation. The board was a three-member board. The discussion was about, even though it was a pass vote and pass meeting, it still counts as discussion of the business affairs. And it, it hit that third prong of being on interactive communication Facebook. And so my little blurb at the bottom, it did not constitute a serial communication because there's no intent to reach an agreement of a matter. They had already, they had already taken a binding vote, so that part couldn't be a violation. All right, scenario number two, a commissioner wins five courtside tickets to KU basketball. They invite the other four members to attend the game. The five commissioners carpool to Lawrence together, and they talk about KU basketball, but do not discuss city business during their trip. So obviously that one's not a violation. They don't talk about the city business. So there's your three prongs that you have to trigger each time you're looking at whether it's a coma violation. Scenario number three, we have Billy Ray here. He watches all of the local city council meetings. They're posted and archived on the city website. He's a big fan of these meetings. He finally decided to attend one in person. It kinda sounds like the guy we just had this evening. It was thrilling for him to be a part of it. He went home and tried to watch the video online. He noticed that when he went home and watched it, the video was a little bit different, and it had been edited to remove the roll call, the flag salute, the prayer, and two public comment presentations. It broke his heart.
His AP.
Billy Ray complained to the city and threatened to hire a lawyer and expose them to the media. Was this video an official transcript of the meeting, which shouldn't have been edited? The coma does not require a public body to keep meeting minutes, except with regard to executive sessions. So the video was posted. It was not an official transcript. It was just posted to make the meeting transparent and accessible to the public. So there's no violation. You can edit those videos. Scenario four. At an open public meeting, staff presents a proposal to implement light rail within the city. The CDC tables the item for further research. Commissioner Mike is indifferent on the project, but is curious about how the other commissioners feel about the issue. Commissioner Mike speaks with Commissioner Travis, and Travis reports that he is also indifferent. Commissioner Mike then speaks with Commissioner Megan, and Megan is in favor of the project and tells Commissioner Mike why he should support the project. So that one, it does not, it didn't involve a quorum. It was only ever two people talking. Or we have two different situations there. We have the conversation between Mike and Travis, and we have the conversation between Mike and Megan. You never get the quorum when it's just only two people there. However, you could have a serial meeting in that one. Because it did involve binding action, and so that's kind of the one to take from that. So kinda went through that a little quickly, but it's open for any questions.
In your first scenario, that was a yes, that.
Which one?
Who was in trouble? The third one didn't communicate at all. Are they still in trouble?
In scenario one?
Yeah. So the third one, the third one didn't get involved at all in the conversation, right? Or did I mean it wrong? Did I read it wrong?
Yeah, on this one, there's only two people.
There's only two?
Mm-hmm. But there was a three-member board, right?
So does Commissioner C also get a violation, even though they?
No, no, just, just A and B.
Were involved.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it's only the people involved that get violation, and this was one.
I don't want Greg to get me in trouble.
As long as you don't respond to his Facebook posts, you can't get in trouble.
Have you seen his post?
Thanks.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah. Any other questions for Devin?
So hopefully that was pretty informative. I know I haven't dealt with coma that much in the past, and so it was informative to myself to learn all the rules and kinda review everything.
From what I understand, the school board should have gone through this about a year ago.
That was gonna remain the moment.
We'll, we'll move on. Next item on the agenda, old business. Any old business? None? Any new business? None? We will adjourn, and we will move to the, to Greg.
All right. We'll open the agenda for the Historical Preservation Commission. Looks like on the agenda, consider approval for the December fourth, twenty twenty-three meeting minutes.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
All right, everybody in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Carrie's. Review the remodel for seven seventeen North Main.
All righty, commissioners. We have a remodel of the interior of seven seventeen North Main. I believe we have a PowerPoint that will give us a couple of photos that we can look at while we go through this. You'll remember this building is the old Volkswagen building. It's being remodeled in the interior to serve a new purpose. It's, we have our condition remarks and our integrity in the project description like always, and I'm gonna go through that fairly quickly. This building had quite a number of remodels and renovations to its interior before the historic districts were in place and before it was listed. So most of what we'll be looking at has already been changed in the past. The condition remarks that we had from the nomination was that it's very similar to five fifteen, that was missing its ornate metal cornice. It had those highly modified street level with the covered transoms, but it is very close to this adjacent building. Again, in the district nomination, when it became a part of the historic district, we did notice that the ground floor had been altered and that that transom was covered, and that we had a, again, a significant amount of interior and front facade changes. As you remember, all projects have to be reviewed according to our ordinance and the downtown design guidelines, which are all based on the National Parks Interior Guide. Cannot talk this evening, I apologize. Secretary of the Interior's Guidelines for Historic Buildings. Those standards for review in this project, which is to remodel the interior and bring up the existing walls, if we could, well, there's a little patch front there, a little patchwork on the back. This is just some small exterior work. And then in the interior, to remodel it and reconfigure it for their purpose, a little bit more to bring up those office walls and give a little bit of privacy and install a dumbwaiter. So as we go through our marks that we continue to. So as we go through our, um, marks that we continue to look for, we look for compatible use. It's already being used as an office building and it will continue that. The original qualities of character, we've got very little left, but it does appear in their application that they'll be consistent with those. We are not seeing anything that would be out of its own time. We're not seeing any additional or falsified history in the application. We looked for any of those stylistic features and they seem to be remaining intact. The D, anything that would be interior deteriorated, we would look, that would be repaired, but we're not seeing that in this application. We do protect and preserve those architectural resources. Normally, in our own interior design downtown guidelines, we're looking for that layout and remaining the layout the same. This is the closest that they have and we're seeing very few modifications to it, again, just to fit their needs and provide for that continued usability. So currently staff is recommending that it's approved as presented.
Do we need a motion to approve?
Yes, if you do want to approve it as presented, we will need a motion and we will need it as. We will need to approve the application as it will not damage or destroy a historic resource if that is the app, if you're wanting to approve as presented.
Anybody have any comments?
Make the motion to, say that again.
Approve the application as it will not damage or destroy the historic resource.
Will not damage or destroy, of course, historic resources.
Everyone in favor, say aye. Second motion carries.
All right, thank you all.
Next, we're moving on to the report on the historic preservation survey.
Yes, um, commissioners, you have this additional handout at your bench. As you remember, at the last meeting, we discussed the, um, historical preservation consultant that was going to help resurvey our entire C three district. That is Polish cultural planning. You'll see that the lead is Cynthia Amberman and her colleague Marina Breeze. They are beginning their work of this month. We've had the kickoff meeting last week and we will be work, meeting with SHPO tomorrow, Wednesday, to begin our initial SHPO meeting for the continuation and planning of it. I wanted to give you this because their dates are the twenty-fifth and the twenty-sixth, for the first time they're going to be in town. This flyer is going out, delivered by hand to all of the business owners and property owners that we can reach out to. This is gonna be a multi-staff approach because I cannot be in all places at once. So our CVB Main Street coordinator and our management analyst have spent this morning already going to quite a few businesses south of the railroad tracks and letting them know about this project and what they can expect as business and property owners. And we'll continue up on Main Street into this week. Aubrey is being very gracious and taking the brunt of the phone calls and allowed us to put her name and number on here because most of them should be fairly standard, but we're gonna be seeing people that maybe are a little bit unfamiliar to the community, taking pictures, asking questions. This is a comprehensive survey. It is not just a reconnaissance survey. But we can't enter into a building as its private property without being asked and allowed into. So they will probably be asking to go into these buildings and seeing what they can and photograph and measure. But if a property owner refuses, we have to respect that. And so they're gonna be, I said, these are their first two dates on site. They will continue to make a plan and I will bring it to you as we progress.
What are the north and south boundaries of the district that's gonna be surveyed?
Almost about Eighth Street and First Street, so it's, you can see the entire thing, it's our zoned, uh, C three. If you could look at it on the map, but it, it kind of gets jagged around the edges a little bit. We're looking at approximately two hundred buildings to be surveyed.
Any other question?
Two hundred buildings?
Just about.
Between first and eighth?
And then? No, no, no. We go much further than that. It's gonna be from about Plum and Oak. So it's one to two blocks off towards the east side and two to three, depending on how it fits out on the west side.
So it's not just commercial, it's?
It should be just commercial. It's anything in that C three district. There may be some non-commercial buildings in the C three district, but it is the downtown district.
Any other questions or comments? Moving on, twenty twenty-four HPF grant, continuing education.
Yes, um, commissioners, I brought this to you before, just wanting to make you aware again. This is the same grant that we're utilizing to fund this historic survey. But looking forward, we'll probably be just applying for his, um, continuing education funding. This would be for that conference in, uh, West Palm Beach at the end of July, August. I put a one-page attachment into your agenda so you can review it. I will be sending, as to our coma guidelines, a blind carbon copied email to all of you when the grant actually opens. We're expecting that later this month to see if we have some interest. In previous years, quite a number of years ago, we usually applied for two commission members and a staff member and have been funded nearly every year that we've applied. And I know I had a little bit of interest, but I wanted to follow up with those dates and times so that you'd be aware. We usually get the funding for the grant that covers your travel, your hotel and your registration fees. It does not cover your food because that is not allowed at a federal grant level, but this is a really important piece as we talk about that continuing education requirement for this body. And so, again, I will just follow up a little bit later, but I want you to have some more information. Feel free to ask any questions. And there is a virtual option, so if you're interested and can't make the travel work, we could modify the application. If one person wanted to go in person and everyone else wanted to do a virtual option, I'd put that as an application. But I wanted to give you some time to think about it before I had to make the application.
Thank you. We have any old business? New business? Think we're adjourned?
Thank you.
Thank you.